Okay, I will call the meeting to order. The May 27th Board of Education meeting in Haddonfield. Mike, can you take role?
Mr. Bedford.
Here.
Ms. Brooken.
Here.
Ms. Ho.
Here.
Ms. Ho Gurrell.
Here.
Ms. Kutner. Ms. Peoli.
Here.
Mr. Vecchio.
Here.
Vice President Sidell.
Here.
President Sangello.
Here.
Could we rise to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mike, would you read us the statement concerning open public meetings?
Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given by the Superintendent of Schools in the following manner. On January 15th, 2021, notice of this meeting was posted on the interior of the school administration offices, One Lincoln Avenue, Haddonfield. Written notice was submitted and filed with the Haddonfield Borough Clerk, and notices were faxed to the Courier-Post and mailed to the retrospect meeting.
Thank you, Mike. I want to start the meeting off just to explain we're a couple minutes late because the board and the administration were very excited to meet Kimberly Durrell. We have our new... She hasn't done anything yet. But she did accept the position of Tatum principal, and we couldn't be happier. We're obviously very grateful for Val, and we're looking forward to having Kimberly here. Kimberly brought her husband Heath and her son Steven. So welcome, and welcome to Haddonfield, and we're really looking forward to the future with you. Kimberly will be starting January... or I'm sorry, July 1st, but is always going to be in district to say hello to the community before they let out of school. So this is great, great new things, and we're happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
Do you know what about...
No, no, I was gonna...
Why don't you talk about the process? Because Kimberly went through quite a lot to get here. And then we need to do it now, was that journey?
We definitely put people through their paces. So it is a real testament to have Kim here and what it says about her, her personal character and her academic acumen. So we're really excited to have her. It wasn't... As you guys have heard me say on multiple occasions, it was an extremely competitive field. There were 65 athletes. In the end, Kim wound up spending about four hours with us in interviews. First with me, two times with a panel. The panel included parents, teachers, administrators, and support staff. And then following two rounds of those interviews, Kim had for another hour or so with Chuck and I. So we dug in deep. And of course, to be the successful candidate in a position like this, you have to know your management game, right? You have to know the ins and outs of running a school. What really separated Kim from the other candidates was just the level of passion, care, and concern that she has for individuals.
Great discussion.
And that came through very clearly. That's not to say other candidates didn't possess that, but there was a style of communication and sense of clarity that we believe Kimberly brought to the process. And in listening intently to the Tatum community as far as what they perceive their needs to be, we believe Kim is a fantastic fit and really excited to have her on the board. So Kim, welcome.
Thank you.
Just so you know, Kim, there are times when we have over 700 people watching our YouTube channel for Board of Education meetings. Tonight, we have seven. So don't get stage frightened. But we are, we obviously, we want the community to meet you. Generally, it's quiet. When there are that many people here, it's generally when you don't want to be. And you know, President Sangello touched upon this. There are going to be some official announcements coming out. Mr. Klaus is going to be putting something out tomorrow morning. A welcome letter from Miss Durrell from Kim's is going to also happen tomorrow. We've been very careful and thoughtful about this transition. The Kim's start date is July 1st. Val's retirement date is July 30th. So there is going to be a significant crossover time. And we did that quite purposely. It's a lot to go into a position, particularly following the year that we've had this year. And we want to make sure that we are setting Kim up for success. She has already begun dialoguing with Val. And again, we're happy to have her here as part of our team. And I'm very much looking forward to working with her.
Thank you, I as well. Thank you so much. This is a wonderful opportunity. I feel thrilled. And your welcoming today was so warm, which was consistent with all my encounters so far. So I'm thrilled, I'm excited, and look forward to start.
Thanks, great.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll roll that good news into, I think, is it Mrs. Murray, Polly Murray?
I believe she... Yes. Hi, Murray. Is Ms. Murray going to do the interview for tonight?
She is. She's waving, but she's muted. Polly, you're muted, so you might want to unmute. And you can... The show is yours. You have some accommodations to make for our...
Oh. We had the opportunity of participating in a virtual elementary honor choir for South Jersey. And I chose one student from each school, rehearsed with them outside of chorus time, and prepared them to make their own videos to participate with other students from all over South Jersey. And they participated in a virtual concert of singing two songs. There were about 50 elementary kids participating. And overall, there were like 150 kids from elementary to high school participating in the entire festival. So here we have Lucy Green. Give a wave, Lucy. And we have Emma Hollingworth.
Hold on one second. Lucy, why don't you say something too so you pop up on the screen? I was just waving. Say hi, I'm Lucy, and give us a wave there.
Hi, I'm Lucy.
There you go.
Then we have Emma Hollingworth.
Say something, Emma.
Hi.
And Ella Alkonan. Say something, Ella.
Hi.
I don't know, Ms. Murray. I think you should be saying, "Say something for us."
So they were really awesome. They put in so much time to learn the music. And then they had to listen to the recording in their ears and record themselves singing. And then they put all the voices together to make one big concert. It was very cool.
That's great, Polly. Thank you. Thanks, girls. Congratulations. Thanks for being here, girls. Congratulations. Thanks for the surprise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is our student representative...
Tonight is the senior prom.
Wow, that's...
They showed the senior prom over...
Seriously?
What? We're thinking about having them step...
But aren't they strangers?
They're going these dates. We were able to... They're very fortunate that the venue is indoor/outdoor. Not that they can get dates, but they were able to fit in enough people that people could bring dates. So about five or six weeks ago, there were no dates involved. And because the venue is an indoor/outdoor component, that raised capacity, so people were able to bring dates.
Great. Carmen, I think you are going to take us through a presentation this evening?
Yes, I am.
State of our special education system?
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I will review the Department of Special Education. And there are several components in which I'll discuss: enrollment and classification, classification rates, special education numbers by school building, referral rate, rate of inclusion, and current district programs. So for students in grades kindergarten through 12th grade, this is what our current enrollment data looks like. I did a three-year trend just so we can see where our enrollment decreased or increased. So in 2018, we had 2,748 general education students enrolled. We had 573 classified students. In 2019, we had 2,724, and then we had 470 classified students. In 2020, we had 2,645 students. Now, this rate... These numbers were collected from the New Jersey Department of Education. And currently, we have 471 students that are classified. I need to just make a disclaimer about the 471. The numbers for our classified students for the 2020-21 school year is not posted on the DOE website. So I took that projective from our frontline system that tracks how many special education students that we have in district currently. So the classification rates. In 2018-2019, the enrollment was 2,748 students. Our classification rate was 21%. The state average was 18%. And these numbers are rounded up, so I just kind of at the bottom put like the exact percentage. In 2019-2020, enrollment, 2,724 students, and the classification rate for special education was at 17%, which was aligned to what the state average was. So in 2020-2021, which is our current school year, enrollment, 2,645. The classification rate is at 18%, slightly higher than last school year. We don't have a state average at this time. We'll have our state average by October, most likely. We've had an increase in our special education rate, but what you can also see is that we've had a decline this school year in our enrollment. The trend previously was that as our rate of enrollment decreased, special education also declined. I'm hoping that the special education rate does not increase. What we had this school year due to the pandemic was a lot of our students actually dis-enrolled to go to private school settings. And they were receiving special education services in their private school setting. District. You can see that as central school currently, we have 52 students that are classified. Haddon School has 55 students, and then we have Tatum School, which has currently 89 students that are classified. Middle School, 116. High School, 140. And then we currently have 19 students that are out of district. Our students that are out of district mostly are seniors or students that are currently enrolled in 18-21 programs. Currently, the district does not have an 18-21 program, but I'm hoping that we can develop an 18-21 program. With that in mind, that in the future, we can possibly keep our students that choose to stay to the age of 21 within its school district. Referral data. So...
I can understand, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The 18-21, did they leave at 18?
Yes. They leave at 18 because we currently do not have a program to support their needs. So if a parent elects to keep their child in school until the age of 21, they mostly participate in programs that are vocational programs where they're out in the community or at the community college learning a vocational skill.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question on the...
Yes.
...in our schools? I mean, there's obviously a long outlier there. Does that data exist, is this going from year to year, or does it fluctuate much?
I think that the data is... From what I saw, even from Gino's previous presentation, that it stays fairly consistent, especially with Tatum School. The enrollment at Tatum School is higher than the other two elementary schools.
I see.
And so Tatum School... One of the things that often happens at Tatum School, which I will talk about with the referral data, is that there are a lot of preschool referrals coming into Tatum School in comparison to all the other preschools. Tatum School preschool fills up usually first and rather quickly. And then we kind of push those students into Central and Haddon School to support the needs for our preschool program.
Yeah, that additional context is definitely helpful. And so we see another liar like that, so we're sure to call it out when we get that context. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. In our referral data, this school year to date, we had 93 child study team referrals. In comparison to last year, you know, we had... It's slightly higher. It did not have the projections for the July to September, but from September to June, we had 89 referrals. And referrals come from all sources. They come from parents, they come from the teachers. Sometimes they come from outside resources, such as early intervention. There were 34 preschool referrals for the 2020-21 school year. We had a very difficult time placing preschool students this year. This probably was one that I had many meetings with Chuck, Gino, and Mike about, with fear that I would not be able to service the preschoolers coming in. I received phone calls from Ohio, Pennsylvania, for parents looking to place their preschoolers in the school district with significant disabilities. We've had more preschoolers coming in this year in comparison to last year with significant disabilities. Last year, there were 22 preschool referrals. I foresee that before the end of this school year, we will have probably an additional five referrals coming in because they keep getting phone calls about preschoolers and their needs. One of the things that have helped us a little bit with the preschool referrals is we... Because the number of referrals that were so frequent, the elementary child study team, they started to do preschool screenings. So the plan was for us to start preschool screenings for the next school year. But because the referrals were so frequent, we started to do the screenings a little sooner to help us to determine what we could do to assist preschoolers. I know that some of the local preschools have advised parents to sort out the child study team with concerns about the development of some of the preschoolers. There are some parents that I've spoken to myself, and I've screened preschoolers myself when parents were not certain if they wanted to go through with a preschool referral.
One thing I want to note, to put some context behind the numbers. Unless you live this, it's hard to understand. But when you see those... For every refer you're looking at, I'm going to say on average, 20 man-hours, man-woman-hours in meetings, evaluations, interpretations. And when you think about the load on our team, they really do an exceptional job. Just to put some idea behind the hours behind each of those numbers.
Carmen?
Yes?
You were saying, I think you alluded to this, but I don't want to misunderstand. Did it seem like the families that... Because they're being referred from local preschools, that they all were already living in Haddonfield? It's not like there's a big influx of people moving in, or...
No, we actually do have an influx of people moving in based off of our program. And I think what parents are seeking mostly in my conversations with parents is the fact that Haddonfield has a high number of inclusivity. So we have a preschool program that is inclusive. We don't have a self-contained preschool. What we do is we have an addition to our current preschool program where any preschooler who comes into the district that has any significant needs, and after the team concludes any evaluation and determines that they need additional support, we do provide that, which would give them a full-day program. But in my conversations with the parents that are looking to move here, they appreciate that we are inclusive and that we have the supports...
Thank you. Thank you. So Childfind should help predict what your levels are going to be going forward. But with the rash of move-ins, it's not so hard. How can we... And this might be later in the slide, but how can we improve predictability so that we have... And Gino's chuckling behind the mask. But is there any predictive data to help budget the resources that are needed to support the incoming demand? Besides child, I mean, that's the only one I know of, right? That would get like the one, two, three-year-olds, so we'd understand at least one year out, but move-ins.
Yeah, that's a hard one.
And that's why I was chuckling on that because, you know, special ed directors... If you work in this job for any length of time, you know that special education budget and planning is a moving target. It's one of the most challenging aspects of trying to purposely plan, particularly when you're talking about resources and budgets. Because the reality is that you can't predict that the family from Maine is going to move into Haddonfield in January. And there's never... It's never legally or ethically sound to say, "Well, we can because we didn't know if the services are provided." And while Childfind helps to spread the word about the availability of services, and Dr. Henderson's office works very closely with early intervention so we get an idea of who's coming through the pipeline there. So that helps with the preschool part to a certain degree. But to try to predict the numbers year to year, if they flood, like just even looking at year to year, these preschool numbers, you go from 22 to 34, that is almost an extra class. When you look at that number, it's like, oh, well, you know, it's not a huge number, but the impact that that has on related services, OTPT, speech, classroom resources, space, is very significant. The bottom line is, no. We haven't figured out an algorithm to be able to better predict. And that's why there really is an art form. There's a science and an art to planning with a budget when it comes to special education. Hopefully, you have a good BA who's helpful and supportive. We do have that, Mr. Ken, well.
Well, in the three last budgets where we presented the dollar graphic, we've gone from 20 cents to 21 cents to 22 cents of every dollar of our budget has gone there. So that's actually a significant increase. And it really doesn't come at the cost of anything. It's just actually additional money found for it. So I guess as a board, we should probably be prepared to continue to see that trend. Doesn't sound like it's leveling off.
It is. Unfortunately, it is not.
I think one of the things that I realized in January is that I could not predict how many preschool children were coming in or parents who intended to move here. But I did realize that the numbers were increasing rapidly, which is why we decided it would be best to screen every preschooler coming in. Because at least we know, we'll know how to service them. You know, we're looking at areas that are within the developmental domains for a preschool or kindergarten student and saying, okay, with any delays, we can see them from day one, and we can intervene very early. And so the hope in doing that is to bring down the number of preschoolers that would eventually need special education. So that we can try to control somewhat.
I feel like I need to qualify a statement. I just made further remarks. I say unfortunately not. It's not that we're spending the resources.
Sure.
It's that we're not able to scientifically plan for the numbers.
Sure.
Hey, Carmen, I'm not looking for an exact number, but are you able to give me this gut feel? Like, out of the 34 preschool referrals, did 50% of them move in specifically for Haddonfield special education?
You know, I wouldn't say 50%. I would say... Intervention is stop seeing preschoolers in person. And could you imagine having a two-year-old, one-year-old, and you're doing teletherapy? That's like the most difficult thing. I tried that with one of my clients. Two years old. He didn't listen to his parents, and he definitely was not listening to me. So eventually, you know, I had to have that conversation that before this child aged out, which was coming very quickly, we have to have some in-person. So that's me as a practitioner. But that was not the likes of many practitioners. Many practitioners did not go in-person. And so those children that had significant delays, they did not get the services that they needed from early intervention, and which is why I really believe that we've had an increase in the preschool referrals. The rate of inclusion. So in 2019, 361 out of our 470 classified students were in a regular education setting 80% or more of the day, which is significant. You know, when you look at that percentage and then you look at what is typical for the state, you're talking about, like, when you look at the state, that number for what the state average is looking like, it's like more so at 45-46%, which says a lot about our inclusive setting here, that we've found other ways to educate... our inclusive setting here, that we've found other ways to educate our students who have special needs without taking them from settings where they can engage with their typically developing peers. In 2018, we had 375 out of 573 students with IEPs who were in a regular education setting. And so you see that trend kind of going up, we're being, we're becoming more inclusive. I would attribute that to some of the programs that we're bringing in to support our children with IEPs. We're looking for different ways to support them through various intervention resources. And the more that we do that, the more inclusive we can be. So what do our programs look like? What kind of programs are we offering our students who have IEPs? We have in-class resource, which this is our general education setting, where we have a special education teacher and a general education teacher teaching the students together. We also have students who are showing various deficits, they are receiving pull-out resource supplement, which means that when it comes to a core subject area, those students do not miss their core subjects such as reading and math and writing. They get additional services outside of their core subjects to address the deficits that are being found in the child study team evaluation. We have very few students who receive pull-out resource replacement. So these students are students that their deficits are significant enough that they cannot successfully be included within a general education setting in a general education curriculum. And so we give them a different type of curriculum that meets their needs. And then we have our intensive teaching time. So this is an additional two and a half hours that our preschoolers who have significant delays, they stay after their inclusive preschool program and they receive various therapies and instruction from a special education teacher and our related service providers. We have our early childhood learning center, which is for our kindergarten students, that's 2.5 hours of additional instruction for our kindergarten students who also have significant needs. And then we have our primary learning center. Our primary learning center is our grade levels, first grade to fifth grade elementary students who need additional support in a self-contained setting. And at the high school and the middle school levels, we have our multiple disabilities programs. Last year, Gino brought back the community-based instruction program from Kingsway. And in that program, we have been able to secure a job coach that works with some of our students outside of school. And we have a variety of our related service supports. As I said earlier, we have a speech pathologist, occupational therapist, physical therapist. We consult for assistive technology, behavioral service, services, bodiological, psychiatric, neurology, and neuropsychology. Currently, we have three school psychologists, two learning disabilities teacher consultants, and two school social workers. And then finally, some of our highlights for this year was that we were able to successfully transition three out of district students back into the district full-time. The parents of these students have expressed sincere gratitude about us working with the students and being able to incorporate them within the school community. The students, when I check in on the students, they appear engaged and happy and they have the support services that they need to continue to be successful here. Next year, we are planning to bring three more of our out-of-district students back into the district. And I think it's great that our parents are feeling secure enough to entrust us to educate their children in district. The elementary child study team began screening the preschoolers, as I mentioned earlier, and they did that with the assistance of the preschool teachers. We added resources to assist our students such as Touch Math, which is a multisensory math intervention program that is very much aligned to some of the multisensory intervention resources that we currently have. We have SUNDAY System 2, which is a multisensory, more in-gi-um-based reading program. And then we also have Let's Play Learn, which is a multisensory reading and math program that is particularly designed for pre-K and kindergarten students. Starting in September of next year, our ITT and our ECLC students will be exposed to multisensory instruction through Let's Play Learn. And then we also have Goalbook App. Goalbook App is our web-based intervention resource system that scaffolds instruction for various types of learners. And we had our first training at the, at the beginning of May, it keeps repeating like what month we're in. So at the beginning of May, we had our first training through Goalbook App where our building principals, teachers, some related service providers have also participated in the training. And I've gotten a lot of feedback about Goalbook App. I think that the teachers and the principals like the fact that we have various ways to support the different types of learners that we have in the district. And I felt like Goalbook App was important because although, you know, I'm in charge of special education, I can't ignore like where we get those numbers from. You know, we, we get students referred from intervention and referral services or parent referrals due to concerns about academic performance. So Goalbook App would, will definitely be beneficial for us in this upcoming school year. And then lastly, we held a Understand the Behaviors Parent Workshop Series in the evenings. And that workshop series was conducted by one of our providers, Step and Stones Group. And we felt that that was necessary due to a lot of the behaviors that were going on in the home due to the pandemic. So, but that's all I have for everyone.
Thank you.
Yes.
So two questions. One, because of the inclusive nature of a lot of the services we're providing, so those apps, are they just for the students with need or are some of these apps also used in the general ed space to further that inclusion?
So these, these resources, something that's really, that I should have mentioned is one, when students are not in special education, they are utilizing these interventions. The difference between last year and this year was that with the SUNDAY system, it actually was intended to support our gen ed students with a multisensory reading intervention program. But once students were referred to special education and classified, then they were shifted into another program. So to have a continuum, this school year, at the start of this school year, I did training with special, some special ed teachers so that they can keep students in the intervention programs that they started in. And in June, we have 12 more teachers who will be trained in Let's Play Learn, SUNDAY System 1 and SUNDAY System 2, with the goal of ensuring that we do not break an intervention program with a student just because they, they need the help of special education. So all, all students can utilize these programs.
All right, and the second thing, going back to the list of services, you don't have to change the slide, but wow. And then the first thing I hear is, the next thing I hear is, extra, extra, extra. And I can't help but ask, how are we on space? You know, these things, they're, they're, they need physical space to occur. Pullouts needed, extra classes, we have AMPM kindergarten, and they talk about an extra kindergarten. What's our, what's our educational adequacy for your space needs for special education? And please be honest, because you know, it's from a planning purpose that I asked the question.
I think we, in special education, I can, I can say I'm a complainer about this.
It is, I, I, I find it remarkable, and you can look at that in a positive or negative, the way our special education staff adapt, collaborate, share spaces, it's, in my opinion, it's a significant issue when it comes to special, special areas, OTPT, speech, small group instruction, the, the space in the district for those kinds of supplemental or replacement programs is challenging in every building in the district. In addition to things like needing space or space to evaluate a child, there have been kinds...
My office here today, evaluation, so I had to leave my office.
My office has been used, Chuck's office has been used as testing locations when we put some of that space.
Yeah. My, my office, actually our storage closet that we had in, had in the child study team office, I started to clean it out, which is almost plain because we need the additional space for our students. So space is a limitation. I think that sometimes the space limitations here impact how we're able to meet certain deadlines and, and scheduling. So yeah, space is not easy around here and I do complain about it a lot. But what I can say is exactly what Gino said, is that the collaboration with everyone to find a space to, to do the work necessary to work with our students is phenomenal. And Chuck and Gina are actually the first superintendent and assistant superintendent that I've ever known in my years in education to give up their office to allow staff to work with students. Like that is not really heard of and it's very much appreciated.
So they're going into the board of that offices to work with students?
Test. If it's a student in the central middle, they just walk down.
We're gonna find a better solution, I'm sorry.
So when we talk about increased headcount possibilities to different activities in town and just planning for that, the number said it's one in five students, right? So you, you're talking about 20, 20% of the population actually has more needs than just the desk they occupy in the class that they have, that they actually, well, and I'm not saying they all do pull out and all that stuff, but...
Closer to probably a little less than 10% of that, of that overall population.
But it's still significant when space is at such a premium. So as we talk about future projects, we should absolutely keep that in mind.
Yeah, especially, especially if the level raised, you know, when Dr. Henderson talks about the intervention program, there's such a commitment to having robust interventions, particularly at the K to 2 level, because that's where we know there's the most, most efficacy. We want to remediate those kinds of needs prior to the finishing second grade.
And you've said that many, many times, they can speak and they can read by third grade or it becomes much, much more difficult.
Are you able to break down the 2020 number, I think it was 471?
I think so. And if the numbers were large, I think it'd be a little different. I just wouldn't want any, anything identified.
We even got away from using initials in reports because sometimes there is only like one RT in a whole school.
All right, I got a question. Obviously, you had the special education audit two years ago. And I, you know, and there are all sorts of benefits that were there, but as you go through the presentation, I'm just like thinking in my head how we stacked up against, you know, that audit. And so I was thinking of, you know, there is, I remember technology, I think CST caseloads, which I'm assuming we got some on a little bit there, I think some collaboration. But you talked a little bit about technology. But I guess the story that I've heard is that we've made considerable improvements, even against those relatively limited weaknesses that were noted in that report. Is that fair?
I would say that is fair to say. As far as technology, for the most part, how we handle technology, especially from, at the elementary level. It's definitely more individualized, whereas, you know, I know John is doing his Chromebook initiative. But since we have an assistive technology consultant, we pulled that assistive technology consultant in to meet more individualized needs in purchasing specific devices that is tailored for our younger students. So we have some of our preschool students who have iPads and they work with them on usage of the iPads. And they import different communication apps on those devices to help them communicate. So when there is a need, especially at that pre-K, K, first grade level, we step away from the Chromebooks and we do something totally different for them. And then as far as the caseloads, the caseloads right now are averaging at around sixty per person. It's still significant in the sense that the referrals. So the referral increase creates an issue where you have practitioners that not only have the case manage that sixty-something, but that sixty-something caseload may increase to maybe seventy-something because of referrals. Once the referral is made, they become the case manager of a student temporarily or permanently. And they have to evaluate. Evaluations can take anywhere from two to three hours depending on the practitioner. And so when you factor in the amount of time that it takes to evaluate a student and in addition to having a caseload, sometimes it seems like we don't have enough people to support the needs. But the collaboration is great with the team where we help each other when we can. And so I think that kind of gives us some relief. But if the referral numbers increase, then we have to be concerned that that audit that was done will become rather outdated quickly.
I appreciate that. Just the fact that we have that audit, I just want everybody to know, anybody who watches, this didn't happen by accident. All the great work that's happened, yours, Gina's, the team others. There's a lot of focus and people are continuing to reference that and make sure that we're continuing to grow and truly address any perceived weaknesses on the program. There's not a time to do that.
I guess I'll come back to that. But is it, are we allowed to talk about some fundamental changes to where we're setting up the staff?
Oh, the conversion to twelve month?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's another, another one of Carmen's. She says, calls a complaint. I think she's persistent. This is her. One of the real life things that we're going to see now is the MOA was redefined. I think the April Board meeting was part of the new contract. It's already proved that our child study team is going from ten-month positions to twelve-month positions. And that's a lot of great benefits for the kids in that. Timing, so, you know, child study team days, due dates don't stop. It doesn't matter whether you have people working in summer or not. Those things have to happen. But also it's going to be consistency for the team to work with students throughout the summer. So it's not just, oh, I happen to be in and I might, you know, I might be, you know, a high school-based person and here's a third grader. I'm going to have the team in, they'll be a little work more proferently. And I've come, you could probably explain the benefits better than I can, I'm sure.
Yeah, I totally forgot that as a highlight. I can't believe I forgot that. So yeah, so I have to say something, like the team is great. The day after the board approved them to have a twelve-month contract, they had a meeting to map out how to ensure that the department would be covered every single day by a school social worker, a school psychologist, and a learning consultant. Not one day will be uncovered by a team.
But still work in every occasion.
And still, they collaborated when they could take breaks just to ensure that no day goes without a full team. And I think that they did not have to do that, you know? They just got approved to be twelve months. They didn't waste any time to plan out how to make sure the department was covered. And in addition to that, like the secretaries are just great. They collaborated with the secretaries on meetings, like what days to have meetings and what days they're going to spend evaluating students throughout the summer. Like, I really couldn't ask for a better team, a more committed team, because that's a lot of commitment. Just, you know, they couldn't have said, oh, we got a twelve-month system all in glory, but that's not what they did. So I very much appreciate them. I think for the community, having a twelve-month child study team is going to be such a benefit. You know, as a parent of a child who has special needs, you know, and I said this to Chuck and Gina, is that often rely on the school as a primary resource. And when you don't have access to people at the school, sometimes parents don't know who to turn to. It's not easy just to pick up a phone and call a doctor and say, this is going on with my child and you might, I need to come in right away. But when you have a child study team available as a resource to help you navigate through some difficulties or any type of challenge or need that you may have for your child with special needs, that is such a huge benefit. So I definitely know with the team that they have already started planning for the 21, 22 school year. And I'm talking about like how to be more efficient for, not themselves, but just for the families.
And Carmen, real quick, how much involvement does the district have with the eighteen to twenty-one year old placement programs? Is it, do you, do you help place students and evolve them out? Or is it more, do you give them what the options are and let the families research?
So Michelle Scott, our school social worker, she has a lot of involvement with that program. Michelle spends time researching programs, also ensuring that the services are in place to support the students in those eighteen to twenty-one program. There are times where I have also assisted with Michelle in making sure that those students have coaches or that those services that they receive in the eighteen to twenty-one program stays consistent. So there's a lot of involvement.
I know somebody, that's why I sit on the Camden County Educational Services Board and the New Project Search. I know somebody in the district who got placed into that program, which they're in a program.
Yes, and Michelle assisted with that, Michelle Scott.
Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Carmen.
All right, Mike.
Enjoy your night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Mike's going to take us on a tour of our capital improvement plan.
All right, we're here to talk about capital improvements. All right, so capital, most important question to ask is why do we, why do we perform capital improvements? Well, to protect our investment and what exactly, what exactly are we improving? It's PPE, not to be confused with personal protective equipment, that's property, plant and equipment when we're talking about capital improvements. We perform capital improvements to expand our programs. Perhaps we need to make an addition for a new or existing program we want to implement. So a capital improvement is going to be required. Meeting educational adequacy standards, we were just talking about that in the last presentation. The more students that come in, more space is required. Supporting strategic goals, of course, it's board initiatives or goals that help drive some of the decisions we make in the capital improvement process. And in extreme circumstances, things we don't like to see, but we have to be prepared for our emergencies. If a boiler has a catastrophic issue in the midst of July, or sorry, sorry, not July, January, that's an emergency. We can't run our buildings without heat. So that'd be something we'd have to take care of through an emergency capital improvement. So what is a capital improvement? This is the definition out of the New Jersey Administrative Code. School facilities project and capital improvement are synonymous. So when we talk about school facilities projects, we're talking about the same thing with capital improvements. That's acquisition, demolition, construction, improvement, repair, modernization, renovation, reconstruction or capital maintenance of any of our property or our facilities. Notice all of the professionals that get involved during the capital improvement process. You have your architect of record, always legal, legal assistance, financial advising assistance. Depending on the scope of your project, a construction manager. So how do we plan for capital improvements? Best practice is to perform periodic condition assessments with your architect of record and your certified educational facilities manager. In order to know what your buildings need, good practice again is going out and actually looking at your buildings. Getting feedback from all the stakeholders involved in, with the school district. That includes the community staff, the board, and your students. Knowing what we need from them is equally as important as the advice from an architect of record. Using our capital forecast tool. There are, this is in place in order to plan, organize, and prepare for future projects. And lastly, can't do a capital improvement without money. So your three main sources of financing for capital improvements include your operating budget, capital reserve, and bond proceeds for referendum. Could also include grant opportunities, but most of the time they're for very specific things. But grants are also another funding for capital improvements. So if you remember this slide from my maintenance presentation last month, this is the same slide from the capital forecast tool. And what this shows us over the next five years, all of the, these numbers show representation of things that we need to assess, evaluate in order to determine its condition. That doesn't necessarily mean we have to replace it. It means we need to evaluate its condition. So the decision we need to make is, do we replace it, repair it? Is it okay to say that, okay, this is, this is good for another five years? Or do we just remove it altogether? Do we need it anymore? You can see it's categorized in twelve different categories. And what I did is sort of in a menu fashion, put a few items over the next three years and then you'll see over the next five years. There's maybe three categories or themes you see in these bigger items. There are roofs, our windows, and our unit ventilation, HVAC. Now, these are strictly building improvements for our regular building operations. These are the things we need to let our buildings live, okay? Notice there aren't any direct educational projects on here, for example, additions or classroom space. Well, that usually comes from a more forward administrative initiative in order to implement and get, and get rolling into a capital improvement. Any questions?
Mike, do we look for efficiencies, like next three years, we've got to do a partial roof replacement at Central Middle and Haddon, and then next five years, we've got to do a partial roof replacement? Is there an analysis that's done as to whether or not we save on the second one if we do it with the first one?
Oh, sure. That's, again, this is where, why we hire our professionals or architect of record. We'll say, listen, I know your roof in, on, for the A wing is due, really not until five years, just according to useful life. But it's probably a good idea just based off of maybe pricing, if you bundle these all together. So you should throw that all in with the Central Middle, Central Middle Elizabeth Haddon project. That's very common in school district practice.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, the prior slide where you wrote it down by year? I love that. It's fantastic. Do you have concerns about having money in the budget in future years for the years where it jumps up?
No, again, and that's why I explained earlier that this, the main purpose of the capital forecast tool is, this is our reminder to say, all right, we need to evaluate this apartment, this, this unit ventilator, this roof, this window. If we think it's still usable, we're going to, we're going to put it in a future year.
You don't have any concerns?
No.
But you still plan for it, so, you know, if you're in 2022 and you're looking at a grand total of about a million bucks, you're looking out at twenty-three and you see four million, does that mean that we're putting three million bucks?
Not necessarily, no.
The tool is telling us that it's, I mean, worst case scenario, what do we do?
Well, worst case, worst case scenario, you, again, are either repairing it, replacing it, or you're removing it because it's obsolete for whatever reason. But again, it's also evaluating to see, well, all right, half a million of that $2.3 million under exterior enclosures, it's still in good shape. It's almost like taking care of your car. Yeah, this car is eight years old, that's about useful life of a car, a small paper. But this is still in great shape. We're going to try and keep this, we maintained it pretty well for, this will last us to the five years.
I guess that makes sense to me if we're in 2022 or even 2021, we're looking at a year or two. We can say, how do you know the tool is telling us it's 2.4? But as you look further out, three, four years out, you have to start planning that.
It'll add up.
Because you can't, I mean, not that.
I mean, this is where, this is where, when it comes to anything that will be alarmingly concerned, again, our professional, our professionals will, will tell us, listen, you've got to take care of this next year or year in the future. That was, that was our situation with the air handling unit condition. We were really handling every summer with that. I mean, it was fifty-year-old equipment. So thankfully, the board decided to go ahead with that project. But again, if anything is alarming, doesn't mean we need to take care of it, but it's also, to take a big chunk out of that, you're looking at a referendum-like, like issue.
And that's where I think, if you're looking at 2024, that's probably referendum time about then, right? That's when we'll be looking around the next. These dates fall into the range of the next potential referendum.
Right.
So as you look at the next potential referendum, you look at educational adequacy and improved educational. You take care of these things along with, you put in the windows, you fix those things. The windows are really expensive. And that, this is something they've been pushed off for way too long, right? So that's something that has to be part of the next one. I think, I think in that exterior envelope in 23, I think that's, like 1.3 million of that is windows, I think, right, Mike? Two, oh.
Yeah, two, all of it.
Well, that whole, that whole 2.3 million is windows. So I think that's just, that falls into our next referendum. We improve classrooms, we do this, we do that, and we fix the windows, that's part of, part of $35 million deal.
And it's kind of like what Tom was saying too. Once you decide that you probably need to raise funds, then you start looking for efficiencies in future years as well. Let's say, yes, we could have gotten 25 years out of this thing, but to replace it at 22 years while we have the funding in place might be a better decision, or 21 years. And, and Chuck, this jives completely with the promise of the last referendum that, you know, we left things on the table, like windows, like the A wing, like the non-shingle roof or the non-slate roof part of A and, you know, certain windows, bathrooms that we didn't touch, you know, all of those things. So this really does, this isn't a surprise. It's actually proving what our assumptions were when we made the decisions back in 2015.
I feel like, I feel like I'm. We, it's natural in a school setting to, I would call it Dave Seidel, he's one of these loose terms, kick a can, right? But what we didn't have before that I think the software has now with plenty of places, you still kick a can, right? If your dishwasher acts up, you might call the repair man and he says, look, it's 15 years old. You might get a couple more years out of it. It'll cost me 20 bucks to hobble it along. What this gives us is a menu and a centralized location for that information. I think it was in the business office, the business administrator's head and Tim's head. They knew where we were weak. They had an idea of what we might spend. They knew that if they sort of slapped some stuff on the cubola and kept it dry for a year, it was only going to work for a while. Now we have a place to document it and a conscious effort, because I forget who I was talking to about this. Because, because my question was, how do you go in, maybe it was Chuck. How do you go in, if you change the date, the lifespan is 15 years, but you're going to get five to 10 more years out of it. You're changing the date there and then if Tim and Mike leave in one year, there's a documented, you know, receipt or, or, we would say, a note that says, hey, we're aware of this and the next person taking the reins is going to be aware that, hey, we've got this million-dollar liability showing up in the next two years. This is what it's going to cost to fix it for a while, but that's what I like about the centralization of this program.
That is actually, when asking other business administrators, they're advising, how do you track, know, what type of projects that you have coming up? You just set it up. They just know what they have to do. It's in their head. This centralizes it and puts it on paper brush so we can see it.
And plan, plan for it also so you don't leave it as some sort of institutional knowledge of the event, which we didn't have before.
And you can report it to the community.
Right.
Very far in advance and say, these are the things that are coming, you know, next stop.
Planning part of it, you know, that I'm most interested in. Like it feels like we currently have the information, well, how do you plan for it? You know, it doesn't improve our money situation. We get the money we have. Yeah, that's why I was asking, like, does that mean, like, a good practice is to reserve a certain amount of money? Yes, there's always the option for a referendum. So guaranteed that they have past referendum. Things can snowball as well. You never know what's coming to the bank, just like for us, like my personal finance. Maintaining a certain buffer in account. You may not cover everything, but at least I'm keeping, I'm trying to put money, you know, away in case something like that comes up. So that's kind of my question. Are you using this tool now to then plan ahead and play some kind of buffer away? Or no, I don't know what the right practice is then.
The buffer's already been in practice. The the buffers already been in in practice to to maintain every year. We always want to make some decent contribution to our capital reserve. So that's that's already been.
What's our capital reserve set up right now?
So I don't want to say yet. I'll be able to tell you on June thirtieth because we we have our E H U project that came in very favorable. We have our the hard skate project that just went out the bid at the board just through last month. That that all was funded by capital reserve. But then you have to consider the ending of operations for this year's budget, plus whatever we did use from capital reserve that has statutorily has to go back to capital reserve. And then also what we're budgeting next year for for other capital improvements. I could I could let you know.
Mike, can I, can I say this specifically? Am I saying it in the right way? That we get one shot to open the open the vault, the vault of capital reserve a year?
Once a year.
Once a year.
Unless you declare.
That's why the planning also.
So we have, let me be more specific. We have one shot to withdraw it. That's during the budget process that just passed. We have one shot to deposit. On your June agenda, you'll see a resolution that has a dollar amount, up to dollar amount of what we can deposit into our reserves.
And if I knew like the target, like target may change every year, I knew like just generally with the target, then I help inform other other decisions. Like, well, choose some money here or there. Like, well, how are we doing on capital reserve? And kind of put that money away. Are we getting kind of close to our government or are we more?
So, I mean, June thirtieth of two thousand twenty, there was roughly over three million dollars. Okay? And again, that was before, I'm sorry, roughly over four million dollars. And that was before a two point eight million dollar withdrawal from capital reserve for various projects issued. So doing that math right there. But again, there's leftover money because projects came in favorable that is going to go back to capital reserve.
Or it wasn't cold in the wintertime and you didn't spend all electricity?
Well, no, 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 I'm talking about money that was budgeted this year for capital reserve that we didn't use.
That has to go back.
To capital reserve, whether we like.
Beats you in better than we have.
Exactly.
But you just can't squirrel away money indefinitely, Justin. Like, there's a limit that puts you at risk. Well, that puts you at risk for the state to come and say you saved too much, I'm sure.
So the the thing is, I I, everything that you're saying makes sense. But I am having a hard time trying to figure out where our strategy for the future is. So I understand that what we're looking at here, this this is building stuff, something that has to be done. And last bond referendum, we had to throw out all of the educational initiatives because we had to 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 bring it way down. We don't know what might happen in the future. And, you know, there are things like, you know, when we approved the hard space, right? It's a smaller project. It's like, yes, we can do it because we have it in the budget. But we had it in the budget. And to me, that is, you know, I'm looking within a smaller realm. But if we know that there are X number of things strategically that we'd like to do within a certain amount of years that are educational initiatives, then perhaps we think differently if we were going to say, should we do this? Well, we have it in the budget. Well, what is our our long-term strategy? And do we have the money for that? And would we make this decision today if we were layering the strategy on top of it? So I'd like to talk more about what are we going to do with these educational measures? What are we going to do with, what are our plans for the the land swap? I mean, we 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 hope beyond hope that everything is going to be fine in the next couple of weeks. What are our plans and and what's the cost? And when do we start talking about that? So I very much would like to talk more about those educational measures, costs, and planning for those.
Was Susan working on the long-range plan? Is that going to be coming in maybe over the summer, the beginning of the hour? Summer, if we approve, she was working on something that was related to the long-range plan?
She was, COVID derailed it, but it's half done. I mean, it's not, it hasn't been thrown out, but yeah, we got to get back on.
Such talent in that area, it'd be good to get back on.
Yeah, we got to get back on the on track because that's that's exactly what we, that's why we started. We had the eighty-five million dollar need. We met thirty-five to keep the walls roof up. And then it was like, well, what about this, the remaining thirty, you know? And what's realistic, what's what's appropriate? And times have changed.
Right.
We.
Yeah, what changes it?
We've seen, we've seen the 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 potential to use technology and the open space, you know, question. And that's a lot of the, how they pull out of the.
And the example of exactly what we're looking at is, we were looking at taking some classrooms here and turning them to a very modern computer, computer manufacturing center. You know, not only you have the computer science, but you have manufacturing tools and those pieces. And we're looking at it, it's going to be expensive, we probably couldn't afford it. And Susan said, but you're fixing this, everything around it. Now you're locking in this entire wing of the building. For this project, it's not thinking, that's not being thoughtful. Because you need to fix this whole hallway, not just these three rooms. And once you fix these three rooms this way, you've now limited what you can do in the rest of the hallway. So that is part of, see, these are parts of the longer plan that we have to, to get back on track and follow. We were talking about water jets and all, it was going to be pretty exciting.
Yeah.
It would be really exciting. But she's right, they've even had three other classrooms you can't change. They're just there forever, but they are these hundred-year-old classrooms, which is not.
And and I mean, quite honestly, we start talking about bond referendums, that's the kind of stuff that that I would be excited to to be talking about. And I understand the windows need to to be done, but it I don't think it's exciting for anyone to go to another bond referendum to fix the roof.
Take that, my window, my office is a tree over here.
That had come through it before.
All right, any other questions for Mike? All right, now hearing that, we did a lot of committee reports last last round. Curriculum, finance, policy, communications, no updates, correct? Tom, you want to give the negotiations update?
So we have a signed memorandum of agreement with the H E A. Next step, ratification for the H E A. I don't know the schedule, although I think it's next week.
There there, I keep you hoping to vote today and see some point next week.
Okay. And then ours will then be on the agenda for June tenth, which is our only meeting. So it'll be a voting meeting, right?
Correct, yes.
And and we'll be on the agenda there. And again, just even having the week to think about it, you know, just such a gratitude for for their work that Chuck, Gino, Sean, and Rachel put into this process. And really, as Linda said, I'll echo her comments from last week. Just for them to be able to go for the for our teachers after this year to go home and for the summer and and not have this is fantastic. And the only other comment I wanted to make was, those of us who who get to spend our our days in in large corporations hear this all the time, but like the whole idea of trusting, you know, trusting each other and and assuming positive intent. You know, I think one thing that we can learn from this process is, and we sort of broke down some of those barriers that prevented quick settlements of these things. Sort of preconceived notions of winning and losing and and board versus union and 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 we just got down to it. We realized that we do have the same interests in my board administration, H E A and H E A membership. And I think this is a real testament to that. And I think that, you know, to the extent that that this practice can repeat, I think it would be great for our district, I think it would be great for future boards, future negotiations committees. And it doesn't mean it's going to work every time. But I think it's a good first step. Because even if it doesn't work, it started from a place of understanding each other and understanding each other's needs without, again, some of those preconceived notions. So great job. Thank you to the other members of the negotiations committee and thanks to the administration, of course, and and our H E A reps.
Like, sweet talk.
I think it was a very good speech.
Did you find it?
What's that?
Did you find it?
I can't understand you.
Everybody was just nodding.
Yeah, it was good. Anybody visit P T A last week? Kidding? Gino, do you have anything to report to us?
Yeah, I just have a quick update. We talked about the S E L surveys that are in implementation phase. We hopefully will finish up our student surveys tomorrow, if not tomorrow, like mid next week. We did just the other day, close our teacher and staff surveys. And while that data has not been analyzed yet, I can, I'm really happy to see that in all five of the areas that we surveyed, compared to the November twenty nineteen survey, all the numbers have risen in the positive, indicating that people are seeing improved areas of teacher self-reflection, school climate, resources for student support. And the highest growth part, which makes me very proud for our team, is a professional learning about S E L. We saw an eighteen-point increase in in staff and teacher reporting responding favorably. And and that's only after a year and a half of implementation and obviously a year or so dealing with COVID that despite that, we were able to put in professional training and workshops for our staff. And they are seeing the value in that. So that's just a just a top snapshot. And the board will receive a comprehensive report broken down by school and by the district, which will compare last year's results, last year's results to this year's results. And I would anticipate having that report done probably close to the the last day of school, somewhere around there. So I would look forward to perhaps the July presentation for all of this.
It's kind of working.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'll I'll take a long share much to just, it's funny, I would never think of myself as somebody that would speak up on something like this. But, you know, two completely different kids, one kid that doesn't stop talking incredibly, you know, incredibly loud. The other one's a little more reticent. And she and she was telling me about how in school they learned about empathy and how would you feel if you were a good kid in school? And the fact that she brought that to me, it's important, you know, it's important. I mean, it affects your ability even to come here to a meeting like this when you're older, you know, be able to talk in front of a group. Right? Because if you don't learn those social skills, you know, at a younger age, it's such a problem. It's incredibly important, you know, we don't talk very much. I certainly never talked about my feelings growing up. So I think it's really important.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gino. Before I go, Colin, do you want to give a quick, I'm putting you on the spot here a little bit. Quick update on the summer, the summer programs are moving.
Happy to do that, but we're kind of excited that we're going to be able to open it up to other members of the community. So we've got through the tiers and we have some openings. And so we're going to open it up, the whole program. There'll be, we might have to use a lottery if we have too many people who are interested. But it's a pretty great array of classes. If you're interested, if you're listening, if you're hearing this and you're interested, please do reach out. We'll send you the the website catalog, but that'll be going out. We're going to ask Polly to send that out to the community so everybody will have access to that. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you, that's great.
Thanks, Mike. Chuck, did you have the report? I do, yes. I haven't, I'm going to use the screen sharing. So quick, quick overview of my report. Firstly, twenty-one, twenty-two calendars, there's no substantive change, there's no date change. Some of the icons were wrong on them, so we updated the icons to get them right and make sure that everyone understood what was going on. An example was the first Friday of September wasn't indicating anything at all. So no one knew what day, it was, it's actually no school that day. So we had to fix that. Some of the, so some of the indicators were wrong. So it's more of a cosmetic update, but they're accurate now. They're up on the website, corrected, so that we all can make sure we can read them. We had, I think, one place we had a end of report period, which was the last day for teachers, and we just fixed those things. So no date changes, but that was there. We're going to, I'm going to talk a little bit here about something I I shared with the board from the ideas. I'm going to close offices for for the week of June twenty-eighth. All our offices, district-wide, but I'm going to close them. We need, you know, the the last summer was a lot of work that everyone saw was a heavy dip to get ready for school. And and in talking with the team, you know, this summer's won't be the same type of work. It won't be the same heavy dip. But to think that it's going to be, hey, just let's redo our catalog and our our student handbook, we're ready to go for September. It's not going to be that, right? There's going to be things that are going to be different. We're bringing along things that we learned in COVID. There's going to be planets required, it's going to be a very challenging July and August. And and our twelve-month staff have been on a grind for fifteen, seventeen months now. A lot of people gave up vacations later, didn't take vacations, get ready. And I think for for the wellness of of the group and to be ready to go, a shutdown is worthwhile. I think I think Gino phrased it very well, that we've been open and done more than any school around us, but it comes at a cost. People are tired, we're fatigued. So we are going to close the, not close it, shut the offices down for a week. We will have in place, they won't be purely closed, but we'll have to have in place emergency contacts. We'll have in place ways to get in touch in case you need something. A good example I thought of, or I was talking, I emailed one of the, you know, a kid who's going away to college, he didn't get his college records all. We have to be able to get get to that office and get those college. So we'll have in place mechanisms for people who have time, urgent things to get done. But I wanted to close the offices and and let people have a week just to recuperate. And I thought about closing one building, one, you know, we, in stadium, I think the collective breath where everyone says, no, we're stopping because I know people who work here, and you know them too. If one of the offices is open, they're working, right? They'll be checking in and doing those things. So I think you're almost fortunate to say no one else is working, they peer pressure not to come to work. Because that's what we have to do. So we'll be getting this notice out to families and making sure that everything's taken care of. We'll have a meeting next week to plan this because that's a week people work usually, right? And so we'll have to make sure that everything gets done that week. And an example would be like the business office, that would be, that would be a payroll week. So we have to see if we have to adjust the payroll schedule, those type of things. That way they can be part of this. I think it's important that the entire twelve-month staff is part of this collective breath. So I I I know that I got a lot of good positive support from the board, I appreciate that. I'm sure the people, the twelve-month staff appreciates that as well. But so that's that's just for the, that announcement tonight, we're doing that. Our COVID updates, and these are becoming shorter, and this will be my last one, I think I'll probably, I'm not going to do one in June.
I'll have people that make you, Chuck.
If you want to see one in June, pop there some of those. So we have, now we have three COVID cases. You see, there's one, the one I had, you can talk to high school. Even our our quarantine numbers are down. A lot of that is because of the vaccination, a lot of that is because we had positive cases, enough to quarantine you positive. So those numbers are way down, which is great. Our number's down and our calorie scores are 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 good. And here they are, you can even see the percent positivity, we're actually in the green. So we're getting very close to to that. And that's it for COVID numbers. I mean, if anybody has any questions about it, I mean, it's, you know, I I, there are, you know, it's one of those things where you get almost nervous, maybe we're going to get lax now because the numbers are so low and and this Memorial Day weekend coming up and this and that. I think beginning tomorrow, there's no more masks in indoors in a lot of places. That does not apply to schools. Schools still require masks and are considered like the other places. So that's in place, but I I I expect to hear some information about grabs, end-of-year activities, graduations and the like, where they're going to, there may be specialized, there's going to be restrictions for that. So those things will be coming out soon, I'm sure. And here's our upcoming presentation, if we have some things to do this summer. And that's that's it. Any questions? All right, thank you.
He came so dangerously close.
To what?
To say, somebody somewhere is going to say, and I'm not saying it, COVID's over. And then, and then they're going to get beaten. But it was like, yeah, school's over in June. Uh, and yeah, listen, great, thank you, Chuck. Any questions for Chuck? So on behalf of the board, wow, one of another people, but enjoy your week. Well, well-deserved respite.
Yeah.
And take your breath, and in a good way, I added one. All right, good. I do not have the port other than to joke around about terminology. I'm going to ask Rich to put the slide up for call-ins. If anyone in the public would like to make a comment, there will be a phone number displayed on the screen. Call that number, star six to mute your phone. When I call, your phone number's area code and last two digits. Unmute your phone. You'll have three minutes to make your comment. Traditionally, we do not answer questions, so we appreciate questions and we'll get back to you with those answers. But in the, uh, in the meetings, we're just, uh, we're just listening, you have, uh, to your right to be heard. We'll take a couple of seconds while that screen is loaded, which I know it is now loaded. Would people, anyone would wish to call in for any reasonable incentive?
And school-related questions? Superintendent Klaus does a very good job of responding very quickly to the questions that are asked.
I try to, you have a person that's more.
And if it's a good for the public, general knowledge answer, you're very good at putting it out on the website.
Yes.
The answer to that question. Let's give it a couple of seconds to, uh, see if anybody can load in. We'll take our collective board draft.
Somebody must have texted and said they're taking public comment because it went from six people watching to twelve people watching.
You're not obviously in the street, but twelve people totally just heard.
And they're wondering, why can I rewind this? Soon as the gavel drops, you're going to.
John, you can pull it. Anybody who's calling or stuff, you can pull, nobody's calling.
Nobody does it.
It doesn't, so, great. All right, so moving on to the agenda items. Uh, I will, uh, open it for governance. We're going to accept the monthly suspension HIB report, validation report. We're accepting the annual district summary progress on local wellness and improving the fire and security drill report. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Tom and Dave, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Mike?
Ms. Ho. Ms. Bailey. Ms. Hoearl. Mr. Bedford.
Yes.
Vice President Seidel.
Yes.
Mr. Beckio.
Yes.
Ms. Brooke.
Yeah.
President Sangello.
Yes. Okay, section two curriculum, special education, approval of field trips, conferences, travel and overnight field trips, recognizing, uh, recognizing and communication about the LGBTQIA+ related content for elementary schools, resolution for specific students for homebound, homebound instruction, county county services, uh, to provide educational services to the head of the school district. Approving consulting, Ellen Just Brafman Consulting, providing GNT curriculum design. Resolving to approve override for the digital library, approving the transportation of an individual student. Approving the resolution around Hewitt Psychiatry to create, to do evaluations next school year. Approving vendors for behavioral services, Bretton Oveen Associates, the Stepping Stones and First Children Learning Services. Approving, uh, speech language associates and the Stepping Stones Group to do occupational therapy and physical therapy services for the following school year. Approve speech language associates and REM audiology to do audiological services next year. And approving, uh, assistive technology services for, uh, next year from speech language associates, technology for education and communication consulting, and the Stepping Stones Group. And the last item is approving the Walsh Legacy to provide special education homebound instruction services. Can I get a motion?
Sure.
Linda?
Second.
David? I'm going to lead our discussion on two B. Uh, it's highly irregular for a board to recognize a communication of a department or an administration. I'm very adamantly supportive of the communication. I just think it's a bad precedent to set to put a communication about any item on a board's agenda. It's just not what we do. That's a, sending letters to families from the administration is an administrative, is an administrative job and role. And I don't think we're in position to approve individual correspondence.
Adam, I hear you. Didn't we do that for Dun storage last month?
No, that was a board communication to the public. That was a.
A board communication.
That was a board communication via the superintendent. We, 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 we directed the superintendent to set, to send a letter at our instruction. And that's the, that is something we are, are, actually, it's appropriate for us to do, uh, to tell the superintendent that communication would like to go out. But this is a, this is a curriculum letter going out to elementary school parents that doesn't come from the board.
Yeah, and I, I would just add that it, it fits exactly with the, the mission statement and, and our, and our district goals. I mean, to the extent that, that the administration feels they need support, I think that's where the support comes from. You have my, uh, just speaking personally as one of nine, my one hundred percent support to do this. And I don't want, I, I, I'm, I, I have the same anxiety of, uh, you know, saying yes to two B as if we need to do that for, for the administration, for other things. Or that, or that the public has some right to come to the board after a communication goes out to say, help, you know, you, your administration did this. You, you know what? They did, and they did their job. So that, that would be my, uh, my position on two B.
Any other thoughts? I motion.
How, how, how did it get on the agenda?
I don't know.
I, I can see, you're talking about the LGBTQ. I, I found there in speaking with the principals there and some of the teachers and some of the librarians, there's sometimes pressure that comes. And so, you know, we, we talked, actually, we talked as a team and we met with Shelley Zion and we, and we talked about that we should probably make it explicit that this is something, you know, that you can expect, even though, as Jamie pointed out, it's not really mandated at the elementary levels, but it's something that brings up some feelings from time to time. So it was, it's an, it's an effort to just acknowledge that. But, um, the administrators felt that this was like a supportive act. But I feel like what Tom just said is like more than we need. You know, like that's, that's, I think that's just, they needed to hear that, you know, that, you know, that we have the full backing. So that's, that's why it was included.
I want them to feel that support. It's essential for the board to work with the administration in that way. I, I mean, for help in, in a healthy meeting. I personally don't want every time you, the administration does something that they think is going to have, you know, mixed, mixed feelings.
It's just a technical, we, we pass policy.
Yeah, that's, it's just not what we do. Yeah, yeah.
I, I appreciate you, Larry.
But I want them to, I, but I, I like.
Reiterate support.
Reiterate support, yeah. I want to do, go forth and, and, and continue, continue with this.
I should add that no one ever doesn't feel that support from the board. It's a little bit of pressure, just social pressure to help from the community. Yeah, I'm just going to go down, I think the board clearly supported it, but they're not. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no hard. No hard go.
But it, it, it's not a no hard enough argument for me. We approved the one book that gets read every year, and we don't have to do that either. And I think part of the reason we approved the one book isn't, it's not in the finance section, it's in the curriculum section. When we're in the finance section, we're approving buying the book for everybody, right? But the fact that it's in the curriculum section, we're giving board approval that that's an okay book for everybody to have because there are times when somebody says that is not, that might be grade level, it's not maturity level. I, I actually don't have a problem with this statement being here because I see it as no different as why we approve the books. I don't think we should approve the books.
I was just going to say the same thing. You know what? Because that raises a really great point.
You approve all, you approve all.
Yeah, that's why. If we haven't read the book, then how can we approve?
We approve all.
The board has to approve all instructions.
Why are we singling out? Then why are we singling out?
That's just like if you, if, if we were to put, if a, if a senior English teacher wanted to put a new novel on, it'd have to come from board approval. There's a form to fill out, the, any book, the ones, one book, one school, that's the same process. It, it stands up, it's a, we don't tend to add new books yearly like that. So it looks different because it comes that way. But just like when I want to add, um, I would add Song of Solomon or whatever to my twelfth-grade reading list, that would come on it, it would be approved. And every year you approve, in, in the, uh, in January, there's a list of three hundred, four hundred books that get approved every year by the board, and that's part of, that's part of what has to happen. And then part of it, and then if someone doesn't like it, there's a process they have to go through to appeal that book and say, this book, we don't believe this is, challenge the book. Um, and then you're challenging a board-approved book.
So what you're setting up here, though, is a different precedent. We don't, we do not approve communications from the administration. And if we set this precedent, then, then every communication, what, was it approved or wasn't it approved? And, and then are we, which we clearly aren't procedurally approving communications.
Probably all of them, they just asked for our support by putting it on here. They said, we want your support, we're putting it on here, do you approve it? And I'm saying, yes. And I think you all are.
You can say yes, but we're not finished with the discussion. There's going to be, well, I, I, I mean, we can continue. I'm motioning to pull two B. Do I have, I mean, is there a second?
Pull, is that proceed?
Procedurally pulling two B, so, oh, sorry.
But before you, before you, 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 you hear that.
But we can, then we.
Oh, we can discuss it, yeah.
Then we can discuss it.
Yeah.
So I think we should.
Back into discussing.
Okay, so, top seconded? Okay, now we discuss, do we pull it? Then we can discuss, and then we vote.
Well, and here's, here's what I'd like to, to talk about. If we said no, then it, we should not be telling the administration what they can send out to, to parents. So just the same way that, you know, if we say yes, we're supporting it, if we say no, it's not really our, our right to tell the administration how they can communicate to parents.
Right.
It's also not our right to say what you can and cannot ask for our support. That's my thing. I mean, if you feel as though that, that this is something that you would like, we're not saying that, we're not setting a precedent that you have to ask support because we're not the ones requiring you submit it for our approval. But if you are saying that you would like the support of the Board of Education to send out an LGBTQIA+ letter, I think that it's within your right to ask for it. And for us to deny that approval is not saying like we're, we're, I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it sets a precedent, but it does allow us to give support to something that we've talked to curriculum committees. There have been emails, there have been concerns from the community. And as a board, we are saying that we support you. Whether or not you don't have to ask for our support, but if you are asking for it, you are getting it. So I, I think that it should be kept, and that we're approving it not because we have to, but because they're asking us to. And, and, and that's just.
As long as we're understanding that the board fully supports it, I think it really matters one way or the other. For this particular one, after you leave the bond, you guys will support it. And I don't think it's going to set a precedent where people are coming to us and bringing additional communications. And if they did, I think we'd have the same response. You don't have to bring this to us unless you're looking for a show of support, which I'm hoping. And we're telling you that it's a part of our mission, we're giving you the support, so you don't really need it. So I, I, I'm actually, I'm buying either way, keep on, we take it off.
I, I don't, what I'm, we talked about it in committee and gave support in committee. We brought it up at the work session and gave support at the work session. Now it shows up on the, uh, final agenda for support. I'm like, well, I, I don't, I, I, even the, even the, the method that it's like, when, 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 what it wasn't discussed in committee, whether we wanted to put this on the agenda. I actually had a little, take a little bit of exception today. This conversation is a committee-level conversation that got, brought to the committee, the whole. I do, in fact, think it sets bad precedent. I think you give your administration the power to, to make these decisions. You support them in the committee. We had a conversation in work session, and then they, then they send the communication. Now, every, you know, every time, I, I, I think our administration is strong. I think our relationship is strong, and I think that's a good place to be. I think you start adding these things in. Now, every time you have something that, not every time, but I worry that, you know, I'll be, I'll say the words as they are. A weaker administrator or a weaker group of administrators starts to say, if this is going to be mildly controversial, I'm letting the board sign off on it because then the, then the conversation comes here. Frankly, I don't want to hear it. If people have a, have a problem with, with this letter when it comes out, it belongs to the, the problem has to go to the administration. I don't want to sit in a conversation, we, we support you. We support you arguing if someone wants to argue with you about the, the types of readings we're going to have elementary schools. We, we've got your back. It may eventually get to us, but the chain of command is not here. This letter, this acceptance, uh, recognition is, is designed to usurp the chain of command. It, to me, it's designed to say, oh, and by the way, if you have a problem with it, the board signed it. The board, the board approved it. I don't think that, uh, we have very clearly defined, uh, board, uh, district goals. Their very inclusivity and, and understanding of, of the LGBTQIA+ community is, is front and center in our actions and in our, our goals. I think this is the slippery slope. I think it's where you start chipping away at responsibility and chain of command.
So just to say something from a different perspective, um, I, I think it was on the agenda during the work session. That would have been a good time to possibly bring this up and remove it then, but.
Was it?
Yeah, it was. If, if my children ever ask for my support, and it's their right to do something, you know, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say, you already do this, don't ask me again. If somebody wants my support as a friend, like, like, I, I appreciate that they wanted my support. I'm happy to give it. It does fit in with everything you say. I love that they're ensuring buy-in if they're concerned that it's something controversial, which I wish it wasn't controversial, I hope it's not controversial. Um, I, I don't know, I just, I didn't feel bad. I, I'm glad you're able to speak what your concern is, but I don't want, you know, any of the administrators who put this on our table anything to feel like they did something bad. I mean, I, I think it was just a simple, you know, we want to get your buy-in, we're socializing it, and we're giving our buy-in, and, um.
I don't, I don't want anybody to feel bad either.
It is not New Jersey mandated, just so you know. So it is something that Dun does, I think, their point was that if it were mandated, that's fine. Like, like with it, as it is in the middle school and the high school. This is not, this is elementary, and they're choosing to be proactive in that way. And that was specifically why I think they, the discussion around in the committee was for the support. And I.
I think the key distinction is they're not our children. They're administrators.
I think you need to imply.
No, I know, but I mean.
What I'm saying is if somebody asks for support, I'm not going to say, no, you don't need to. But there's a friend or.
It's all there now, so I'm, I'm going to go, leave it all there. If it wasn't put on there, I would say, it doesn't need to be. If I'm for, I need to approve communications, I want to pass policy and make sure that communications are consistent with our policies.
I want, the reason for my striking it is, is nothing to do with not supporting our administration and nothing to do. I think we support our administration the best by ensuring a proper chain of command that they can count on. If they have our support, we support them. If they want to send up, every time Chuck sends a, you know, fifteen-page newsletter, if there's something in that newsletter that somebody, oh, I, I certainly don't want a board to ever be reviewing Chuck's newsletter or, uh, or any, any, you know. And I just think, I think it's the front three, but, but, hey, listen, we can.
I think it's a big jump from, this is the first time I've ever seen this. So I'm going to give the benefit of the doubt that they need our support.
Listen.
If, 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 if this became something that reoccurs on a more regular basis, I'm right there with you. Yeah. But the fact that it's here tells me a lot that we need to stand, we, it's not a chain of command. They're not passing the buck, they're asking us to stand next to them, not in front of them. And, and I am, I'm actually going to keep arguing until it stays on here.
Yeah, I'm going to, let me go out that, you know, we're getting everybody, um, I, I. So, let me throw out that, you know, that's hearing everybody. Um, I, I, I don't want to be approving communications. But you know what? The language doesn't say approve. And if it said approve, I think that I would feel stronger about we should strike it. But it says to recognize. And because it does fall in line with, with, with our, our vision, what, what we, we want to be. Um, it's the, the recognize versus approval that makes it okay for me.
And Adam, I, I haven't, I haven't found those first, but I hope it comes out correctly. But, um. You know, you're okay with striking it and giving the support because you agree with it. There could be unforeseen things that we can't imagine right now that are controversial in the future. That they want to get our buy-in, that they want to socialize with us, so they put it on the agenda. And I don't want from this conversation. To have it be that, oh boy, never socialize it, never get buy-in. Like, I'm okay with any time that they. Uh, I want them to stand on, on their, you know, on their own and feel comfortable making those decisions. But when it's something that. That they want us to stand with them, I'm happy for them to put it on the agenda whenever they want, whenever they deem appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I, you're, I, I don't disagree with some of your arguments. I just don't think it fits with, with. And I, and, and that's why I made the motion. And I, at the risk of looking like, you know, I'm anti-communication, which I am not at all. I just, uh, I just don't think it fits the. Responsibility of our board. But I'm here, you know, run or vote and then, you know. Uh, well, we can do it, we can do it however you want. Uh. Mike, if you, should we vote or do more discussion?
I think you dropped there.
Yeah, it's a good.
Do you want to, all, all, all in favor of keeping it on the agenda?
That's not what the motion was.
It was a motion.
Oh, all, okay. All in favor of striking it on the agenda, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor of keeping it?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we keep it on the agenda? Uh, do I have to re-motion for the?
No.
Okay, so back to the, any other discussion on two? Big food.
So I, I shouldn't, I shouldn't move this one. I'm sorry, but, um, where did we land with the, the, um. The five blocks and the. Okay, okay. Yep, yep, okay.
Uh, I just want to recognize, uh, the overdrive initiative between the library and the schools. Uh, anything that increases access to the knowledge of the world without increasing the need for space, I'm all for. Uh, I would just hope that somewhere down the line. Uh, that as we continue our technology initiatives for students, that, that we make sure that. Programs like this are still accessible on those devices.
Any other comments? Questions? Mike?
Ms. Ho. Ms. Paoli. Ms. Hoberl. Mr. Bedford. Vice President Seidel.
Yes.
Mr. Beckio.
Saying two B, yes or yes?
Ms. Crockett.
Yeah.
President Sangello.
Yes. Okay, personnel approvals, section three. Uh, new personnel transfers, salary upgrades, mentoring, extracurricular coaching requirements, reasons of absences and resignations. Approve increase in hours for a TAVM teacher. Approval of the contract for Dr. Priolo as superintendent. Approve, uh, Aaron Hart provides speech evaluations. For, uh, approve, uh, the following employees to receive the curriculum or curriculum pay rate. For classroom rooms, and it's actually going to be seven teachers. And we're going to resolve to approve. Uh, um, ten hours of curriculum to oversee, uh, French, H and H S, French grades, finals and campus. Uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Tom, Linda? Any discussion? Okay, Mike?
Ms. Paoli.
Yeah.
Ms. Hoberl.
Yeah.
Mr. Bedford.
Yes.
Vice President Seidel.
Yes.
Mr. Beckio.
Yes.
Ms. Crockett.
Yeah.
Ms. Ho.
Yeah.
President Sangello.
Yes. Section four, uh, tuition reimbursement for two, uh, staff members. Um, actually, two different tuition reimbursements for, uh. Ten, uh, 12 staff members. Gloucester County Special Services, uh. And we've had the Board of Education to participate in a cooperative transportation service agreement. We are renewing the contract with Alphabet Education. We are approving E S S Northeast to provide substitute ta, uh, staffing. Professional medical staffing to provide substitute nursing. The tax payment schedule for the borough and Tabestock, we are approving. Approving a change order in the construction, uh, for the AHU, uh, air handling unit, Sea Wing. Uh, we're approving clarif, uh. Uh, clarification of unit petition settlement agreement with the HEA. We're approving to renew, uh, the contract with, uh, Advocate for the custodial management, uh, monitoring services. We're, uh, proving with computer solutions for software support for our budgeting and account, accounting of payroll and HR ser, uh, roles. We're proving the contracts with, um. I E P Direct, uh. Apple Track, 504 program management, professional learning management. We're proving submission of the coronavirus response relief supplemental appropriations act. We are approving the addendum to the fourth year contract with Nutriserve. We're approving a memorandum agreement and successor collective negotiation agreement with the HEA. Uh, we're approving payment of bills, budget transfers, the board's separate term report. And the cash summary report.
Our motion.
David?
Second.
Justin? Any comments?
Quick question on payment of bills, Mike. You have a check for zero. Why would that be as a check registry? Uh, it, it is checked, not, can I give you the name or check number? Uh, no, it's a person. Uh, so check zero two five six three two Beth Herrera. Avoid a check?
It comes off.
Okay, great. It just seemed odd.
Any other questions, concerns?
Yeah, you know what? Um, we might not have the answer for today, but I remember in years past that. Uh, Tabestock was not paying its fair share of, um. Of school taxes when you would look at, at the rate that Haddonfield homes would pay. Um, I'd love to just, you know, it doesn't have to be anything in rush, but maybe over the summer so that next year we can see whether or not that's something we want. Tabestock. We would make adjustments for it. We always tried to bump it up in the past to make it more, uh, equitable and maybe some improvements, but I don't think it ever got. It was a mistake. I don't think they ever got either.
Well, that's a percentage that we are giving by the state of New Jersey based on P S S A numbers. So their proportionate share of the tax levy is something we can't change. So this is actually something that has been corrected in the last couple of years. It was, it used to be classified as tuition, but it's not the way, right way to do it. We, they, they, they are technically a non-operating district. They, they give tax levy money to Haddonfield so their students can come. So that's a rate that is determined by.
Several years ago, um, governor's name escapes me now. They were trying to combine school districts. And there was an effort to have Haddonfield and Tabestock become one school district. Um, which would then mean Tabestock would have the same tax rates that we had. It did not, it, it, uh, who was the governor who came back right near the court? It's on the bill.
Yeah.
Because Steve was the board president at the time.
Well, and.
Yeah, but, but that's, yeah, that, I don't think that ever.
Terrible.
Terrible. It's supposed to be a whole thing where they're going to, all, they're going to start taking a bunch of smaller districts and, and combine them to reduce the number. School districts in New Jersey, but as it stands right now, we're, we're going wrong. Tabestock is still an independent school district.
And it would take their referendum to change that. The chances of that vote in port are slim and none.
Oh, wait, I, I don't, I know you guys are too, so they're not sending Tabestock. People wouldn't have stuck with it if they're not going.
They do come here. It's a sending and receiving relationship.
Yes, there are a very slow number of kids here. They, they, their proportionate share of the tax levy to Haddonfield because they have kids.
Only when they have kids here.
Well, if there were no kids attending Haddonfield's condition, Tabestock, they would always zero. Uh, Hyneella is another local example. I think they go to Stratford or they're non-operating school.
And when, we've all signed for that notice, that, that's the amount they take for a student is pre-attained.
That sounds like it's more comfortable now with all the people. It wasn't in the past, but.
Any other? Mike?
Ms. Hoberl.
Yes.
Mr. Bedford.
Yes.
Vice President Seidel.
Yes.
Mr. Beckio.
Yes.
Ms. Crockett.
Yeah.
Ms. Ho. Ms. Paoli. President Sangello.
Yes. Section five, approval of minutes for the regular and executive session on the 22nd and the regular and executive session on the 29th. Any comment, uh, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Jamie and David, any comments, questions, corrections? Mike?
Mr. Bedford.
Yes.
Vice President Seidel.
Yes.
Mr. Beckio.
Yes.
Ms. Crockett.
Yes.
Ms. Ho. Ms. Paoli.
Yeah.
Ms. Hoberl.
Yes.
President Sangello.
Yes. Any items for future consideration? God, I have one. I had one today and I lost it.
Write it down.
All right.
Consider who's taking the last one.
Yeah. Uh, motion adjourned?
Oh.
Motion, second.
I didn't hear a motion. Linda, Jamie?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you all. See you in June.